I call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Potem Smith. Councilwoman Davies.
Here.
Councilwoman Haggerty. Councilwoman O'Keefe.
Here.
We have two outside tonight. Mayor Potem Smith and Councilwoman Haggerty.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask you to stand for the invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor John Lopez of the First Baptist Church. Before he begins, we're going to have a moment of silence for Ruben Brandon, who many of you may know. He was the country real estate broker for many years. He was a local business owner. At one time, he was the chief of police. And he was also one of the founding members of the Police Foundation. So if we could just take a moment for that. Thank you.
Our Father, we come before you, Lord, thanking you for Ruben and what he has done in this city. Lord, we know that without him, God's sake, there's sadness and hearts. So our Father, we pray that you would comfort the family during this time, that you would bless them and thank you for your service. And Lord, as we come to this time, right now, where the city will be conducting business, our Father, I pray that the motives would be pure. There would be sincerity. There would be the realization that it's a responsibility that is needed and taken seriously, that things and decisions will be made in the right way. So our Father, we just ask that you be with this meeting, be with all those involved, be with those that will be making comments. I pray that it will be made in the right spirit and will be received and heard. But we ask these things in your precious name. Amen.
Amen. Please stay standing for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Davies?
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Now, before we proceed to the consent agenda, I'd like to read the statement. We kindly request that all audience members in council chambers remain seated throughout the meeting unless speaking at the podium. We also request that citizens in attendance remain in the audience seating area and refrain from approaching council members and staff at the dais. Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to have something removed from the consent agenda? Um. Counsel? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Note the record show it's a 3-0 vote. And before we go into all of our public comments, I'm going to turn it over to Kern County Transportation Project presentation by the Kern Council of Governments. Thank you.
I can also use my mom voice if you...
Oh. We all have that.
Thank you. My name is Jeanette Flores, and I'm here with the one and only Mr. Bob Stoney, who most of you already know. And we're here to talk about the Kern County Rural Transportation Alternative Plan. And really to provide you an update in terms of what's been happening. We've been very busy in terms of our outreach and communicating with various communities. So what is the purpose of this study? The goal is to make recommendations for public transportation improvements in Kern County, focusing on rural areas outside of Biggersfield. And as I mentioned, we've been very busy doing outreach in the communities of Wasco, Arvin, Tatchee, Rosemont. So we really are trying to get out there to spread the word to the various communities. And to date, we've conducted several stakeholder interviews. We've done public engagement, also some research on electric vehicles. And we're working in partnership with Nelson I. Hart, who is a transportation firm. They're actually looking at some regional programs or looking at other programs that have worked in various communities in terms of transportation opportunities for rural communities. So they are definitely the experts. We're the experts in outreach, and then we have the colleagues also experts in terms of transportation. So we are doing the second round of the public engagement right now and also doing interviews. And really want to hear from you in terms of what the needs are of your community for transportation. So. So currently, existing transit needs. And these are the rate maps that the planners put together. And it shows really the transit property, the density map, in terms of the usage and the most dense areas in terms of the population. So what we see is, can you move to this? For instance, like a community in Fort Worth, we see that there's high usage, particularly in more socially, lower social economic areas. So we see that in Fort Worth. And we've looked at Mohawee as well, not as dense as, Mohawee isn't as dense as Fort Worth. So again, looking at these maps in terms of usage. Ridgecrest also has some pockets that have really high usage and high density as well. And then we have Taft. Again, the darker the color, the higher the density. And then here we have, are you familiar with this one? A little bit. To Tatchee. So we see some pockets on West Valley, Marston, and Tucker Road, where you have some high usage areas. And we do have to compliment John E. Hart and Wright. That is fantastic. So again, that is great in terms of transportation for the community. So outreach to date, we've done surveys. We've shared some various public fact sheets, and I've given the information to your staff. We do have fact sheets available. We've been to the chambers of commerce. We did a coffee with the wonderful mayor, so thank you for that opportunity. We've been dealing at libraries, at various community centers. We've been at schools. We've been at Halloween festivals and harvest festivals. So again, trying to get out to the communities. And what we've seen is there's interest in various modes of transportation. We've heard so far that folks would like to see buses that travel longer distances. And we were actually just at Taft a few weeks ago, and students were saying, we'd like to see Uber in this area because we don't have Uber here. So again, it's great to hear what the students want. We see, we've also heard of the available taxi services in the rural areas, the challenges with first and last mile, and then there's so many little bus dog venues. So this is some of the information that we've heard from our, from the outreach that we've done so far. Next up, we're going to continue to talk to communities in terms of what their needs are. Again, we've gone to the various communities so far, and we'll continue to hear from you, hopefully. And you have Bob's information, so if at any point you could get feedback from a community member, feel free to contact Bob, because this information will be culminated and presented in April. So we're looking again for feedback and information from all of you. And if you can, you have successfully still give us a call.
I don't anticipate a lot of changes in Tatchee Transit Service. It's pretty constant, and we're working closely with Kern Transit through Bob Heath and the Public Works Department over there. So there's nothing really fancy coming in it, but I do want to make sure that we look at every opportunity to offset the rising labor costs of public transit. Because as you know, we just can't turn it over to the rioters and say, hey, we're going to double your fares, or we're going to turk your fares to meet rising labor costs. So this is the purpose of this plan, is to look at cost-effective means to reduce operational costs and labor costs that we can meet and still keep the fares reasonable. And again, as we should, as she said, it should be done in an equal or to equal way. And everybody over here knows my address and my phone number and my emails. You know how to get ahold of me. Thanks a lot. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Public comment? Does anyone in the audience wish to make a public comment?
My name is Steven Simone, Berry Alley Springs, and I attend the airport. There's kind of a comment, it's like a question about the fuel price at the airport. We've traditionally seen a price that was pretty competitive with the oil prices in this drowning area, and in the last month, it went up like a dollar or a dollar fifty a gallon for no discernible reason from the outside. I did try and get ahold of Ashley, and I just didn't get through to the office. So I was going to wonder, for those that don't know, the city sets a price, and I'm assuming that they pass on some margin from suppliers. But I was kind of commenting that currently, the price is higher than some of the larger international airports, which is frankly, just not, like, I just won't buy a fuel bill though somewhere else. But I was just trying to put it out loud in word that we'd like to see a more competitive price so that I can keep my fuel bill in place.
Ashley?
So as council knows, I'm sure Mr. Davies is working in the fuel industry. It's all dependent on whether we buy smaller tanks, we have to buy what we need to buy. It just so happened, it was a high time to buy everything. We do have another load coming in tomorrow, should be a low price. It's always set at 50 cents above the base rate. So what you're seeing on there is only 50 cents above what we purchased it for.
I'm not shocked by that. I'm just, it didn't go up in the surrounding area, but it's because they have the discretion not to buy on time, whatever the reason. So like, if it was a dollar or more a gallon than wherever I'm going to, I'll just fill up for it when I'm there as opposed to, and of course, that makes it harder for you to sell off the fuel that you have. So I just want to make sure that it wasn't a consistent thing, nothing changed. It was just, because, I mean, I was getting shocked.
Yeah, no increase in the base.
Okay, thank you.
We understand, and we sympathize with you because we have to put gas in our cars.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we use it for transportation like anything else.
Right. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience?
Good evening. Curious about a little bit, I have a question. So we have a new transportation hub, and I'm wondering if there's any one local place, like on the web or someplace, where we can find out what services are available there and how often the buses run and where they connect to.
So if you go to our website, which is tatcheesityhall.com, we do have a location, or sorry, I can't tell you all how it might, but we do have all the routes for Kern Transit. We keep a brochure on there, all that other thing. And then if you come into the office, we do have brochures for Kern Transit and for Niall Wright.
Okay, so does that hub then go to like Lancaster also?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were interested in taking a student field trip down to Biggersfield, and our bus is kind of crazy for school. So the kids on the bus and, you know.
Under City Services, if you go under City Services, there's a Tatchee bus information. It's got the current regional local schedules, as well as data and information as well, but it's on there.
Yeah, Daryl, I just clarified, it's not beyond that.
Yeah.
Or in Orlando.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to make a comment? If not, then we are going to move on to number 10. Public Works Director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. This is the second reading of revisions to the city's truck ordinance, truck route ordinance. I don't know that you need me to go through and read every item, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have since the last meeting.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions concerning this ordinance? Counsel? No? All right. I'll entertain a motion.
This was my time, while I'm late.
Yes.
So you made the motion?
No.
No.
I entertained the motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the second reading of the ordinance, numbers 97-02-633. Do I need to read the whole?
Let's read the title.
Oh, read the title of the ordinance, admitting, adopt.
No, let me read it.
Oh, sorry.
It's an ordinance of the city council of the city of Tatchee, a manning ordinance number 97-2633, 8307, 849, and Tatchee Municipal Code Chapter 1012, concerning truck routes and vehicle size orders.
Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading and adoption of this ordinance. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Note the record show it's a 3-0 vote. Development Services Director Report, number 11.
So the rest of staff's never letting me put this down since apparently the whole meeting is myself. So the first item I have, Madam Mayor, council members, is the 2019 Building Code Adoption. So just a reminder for the audience to say that every three years, the state of California puts forth updated building codes for adoption by all local agencies for the enforcement and uniform building construction within the state. You do not have a choice about the adoption and adherence to these codes. You are required by state law to enforce these codes. We'll just make a distinction. This is the second reading. We've already discussed this. I'll read the actual detailed ordinance.
I did read it last time. You don't have to do it this time.
I did read it last time. Okay. Excellent. And we'll just remind you all that this is a two-part item. So each time this happens, we adopt the state's uniform building codes, and then you are allowed under code to add additional codes. The city of Tatchee does not choose to do that with the sole exception of trying to align ourselves with the county of Kern, particularly the fire department, who does our contract fire prevention services. We want to make sure that our codes tell firefighters to follow the same rules here in the city as they do everywhere else in the county. So I have not brought that second set of rules to you because it's always lags behind the building code because I'm always waiting on Kern County to get the docs in the road. So we're working on that. So this is just the primary building code adoption. And so in the first read, I read the entire list of codes that are applied there. And so my recommendation is that you adopt by title only ordinance of the city council adopting by reference the 2019 California Building Standards Code. Time to be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the audience? Counsel? I'll entertain a motion.
I think I try.
You go ahead.
Go ahead.
I make a motion that we adopt the second read, adopt the ordinance.
As red.
As referenced.
As red.
As red, yes.
Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the second reading and adoption of this ordinance as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Note the record show it's a 3-0 vote. Number 12, sir.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. The second item I have for you tonight is the SP2 Senate Bill to Planning Grant Programs Application. As way back around in 2017, a multiple bill, housing package, was addressed by the state or adopted by the state of California in an attempt to deal with the housing shortage that we have here in the state of California. The bills were wide-ranging, and my point is not to explain them all to you tonight. I probably wouldn't do a very good job. One of those bills, though, adopted a funding stream for local agencies that is relatively flexible for us to utilize funds directed towards us for sort of whatever purpose we could reasonably justify that might increase housing production. And so the city of Tatchee, each agency within the state that applies, will receive an allocation of money based on our size and who we are, and allocation is $160,000, a one-time grant for small localities, under 60,000 people. So that's not enough money to do, you know, large agencies may be bringing in huge amounts of money to build infrastructure, to make, you know, make the land or refill land more available for housing production, but that's not, that's not enough money to even touch an issue like that. But in our case, staff identified, frankly, a fairly sizable need for us to modernize our permitting process here in the city. We currently have a permitting software that we utilize, but we frankly and admittedly use it in very limited fashion for when people come in for a building permit or they come in for a planning permit for new development. And we still do everything pretty much in paper and all that accounting on paper. And so it lengthens the time that it takes us to approve, you know, that new house permit or that remodel or the addition of a granny flat at the back of a single-family house so that you can, you know, allow another resident to be there or, you know, or move in if that makes sense for you. So we put together an application to utilize the funding directed towards us, towards a serious and major upgrade to the department's handling of all permits. So in Development Services, we house engineering, planning, and building. And those three departments often work together to execute everything from a new housing subdivision all the way down, though, to that new single-family house on that, you know, little vacant lot in the downtown that's never built in. And so the intent of the application or with the funds would be to fully implement our tracking software across all three departments and create a seamless system. And for instance, somebody can now from home apply for a building permit, swipe and type in a credit card at home and apply for that building permit from us and not come in. And then the program itself, for instance, will track that incoming communication routed automatically to the right person for that initial review. And then if there are multiple steps to that review that have to go to multiple departments, the software will, okay, you checked that box, it now goes to person B or person C. So trying to illustrate for you the scope of what we're intending to do. We're also intending to make a major shift towards paperless, allowing people to submit, you know, electronic plans for electronic plan check. That'll streamline the time it takes us to send it to our consultants for review or handle it in-house. And it'll also increase transparency. One of the other big benefits is there's a citizen portal. So if you apply, you can log back in and check on the status of your permit whenever you want. You can see whether it's off at plan check or if it's been approved or any number of other items. And then the program also automates responses to the public. When the permit's done, you press a button, it spits in, prints out, permit done. So a major streamlined how we do business. It does require, however, that you all adopt a resolution authorizing the application for and receipt of the program, pardon me, the SP2 Planning Grants Program Funds. And so that is my recommendation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience? Counsel?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, Jay, is there any more funds that the cities need to, going to have to come up with, or is that $160,000 going to cover the cost for that?
Yeah, it's, yeah, good question. No match required. So presuming I can deliver all of this within the budgeted amount, there is no additional funds necessary. And we feel fairly confident that the budget is sufficient. We've actually gone to, I have a full budget from an implementation software company to, you know, for all their labor and man-hours to come deliver this product to us and train us on how to use it. So, yeah, no match required. My intent is to deliver with no funding, no money out of pocket.
Thank you.
You have a question? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution to apply for this planning grant.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing application for and receipt of SP2 Planning Grants Program Funds.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, Madam Mayor.
It's been moved and seconded to apply for this planning grant with the resolution. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Note the record show it's a 3-0 vote. Number 13, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. The third item tonight I have for you is the Urban Green Grant Design Services. Unfortunately, this is not good news tonight. As you all will recall, we received about a $900,000 grant to plant over 400 trees in various places through the city. So in the process of moving through that grant process, we solicited, in compliance with our purchasing policy for how we bring consultants on board, we solicited through a request for proposals for a consultant to come on board and provide design services for us. We received two resulting bids that are significantly above the budgeted amount of money that we have for the design phase services. We reviewed those budgets, and we feel like the primary reason in which the prices came back above it is not that the price is truly that high, but that the two firms selected very large firms and that perhaps they're sort of overselling us on services that we're looking for in this situation. And so in accordance with our purchasing policy, I don't have a lot of choices. Our purchasing policy says that when we wish to reject the bids that we received, my obligation is to come back to you as the council and ask for your direction. So I won't leave you hanging out there, though. What we believe is the best course of action at this point is to reject the proposals received and then for you to give us the authority to negotiate directly with a couple of smaller firms who might be more right-sized for the type of work that we're doing. So that's within your purview. We would ask tonight that you guys would give us permission. We do have a couple of firms identified that we've worked with in the past that understand who we are and the level of detail that we're going to be looking for to execute this project. So my recommendation, of course, that you reject all proposals and direct staff to independently seek a design firm for direct negotiation. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the audience? Counsel?
Jay, is there any time limitations on the grant? Would we lose that grant money because it's already been a considerable amount of time?
Yeah, good question. I think we're still within our timeline. Our original timeline that we floated to them, we had some float in it. We have three years to execute the grant from the time that they signed an agreement with us, which wasn't that long ago. Our original intent was to be in construction in spring of 2020 for this project. We're probably a little behind that due to this concern at this point. However, if we would now target construction in spring and fall, it would still be well, be over a year under the overall grant timeline. So we're losing a little bit of time on our desired schedule, but we are still safely within the grant timeline.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I move that we reject all proposals and direct staff to independently seek a design firm for direct negotiation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it, ma'am.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that we reject these proposals. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Note the record show it's a 3-0 vote. And now we are going to have a public hearing, Development Services Department, user fees. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Were there any comments in mail?
There are no comments received, and it was published in the Tatchee News on the number six.
Thank you. Proceed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council. This is my final item for you tonight. As you will hopefully recall, in November of 2016, the council adopted a resolution implementing an updated fee schedule for the planning, engineering, and building departments, with also some fees adopted for the police department. And that was largely corresponded to the brand-new zoning code and general plan that we have that frankly changed the way that we processed developments as they came in. And so there was a natural and corresponding need to change how much we collected because what staff had to do was going to change, and therefore the fees were going to go, some go up, some go down, et cetera. So that was done, and it largely focused on development services, but did have a minor police component. We have subsequent to that time, we have continued to implement the new zoning code, and I began to identify over the last three years about a dozen new categories of permit types that we did not capture in the 2016 update, but that in a lot of ways, we don't, we don't know what the right fee is to collect. And so I budgeted for this last year, and we've been back to that consultant and asked them to begin to shape those new and additional fees, and at the same time, to yet again, update the fees for the department. That consultant, as you may recall, it's written in this report as well, he regularly recommends that we update these fees. The fees are very specific. Just to give you all a little bit of background, when we develop fees of this nature, which are full-cost recovery program, meaning the intent is to cover, to capture the right amount of money for the activity undertaken by staff, so that the taxpayer is not subsidizing the cost for us to issue a permit for a water heater, all the way us up to us issuing a permit for a alarm, right? Those require vastly different resources from the city, and the intent is that each one of them, as you go through, would recover. So the way that they do that is you interview staff, and you look at each particular type of activity, and you try to figure out on average how many hours it takes you to execute that. And then as, as the nature of your staff makeup changes, right? Some people get paid more, some people get paid less, some people change, you move on, new people come in. Your... new people come in, your, your actual costs are constantly changing, and so you want to update the fees regularly, but you obviously don't want to update them like monthly, right? That would be ridiculous and wasteful. So it's finding that balance, so it's been three years, and so we thought it was time for those two items to come together. And that's what this report is tonight. The final caveat to mention to you, and I made this presentation last time, three years ago, is that there are also a handful of applications where if you charge the full amount of money, you will commonly just not get compliance, instead of getting your money. So a good example that I use is a temporary use permit, it's listed there on the second page of the agenda, the bottom item. The real cost it takes us to approve somebody's request for a banner for 30 days is $115, but if I charge that much, it's a lot more expensive than the value of the banner, and so it doesn't make a lot of sense to charge that amount of money. So in select cases, staff is, did and continues to recommend tonight that we charge less than the full cost recovery, because in this case, having compliance is worth more than, than a few times people will actually pay the fee. Most people just go buy the banner, put it up, and then hope the code enforcement visits them, so. Anyway, so those are listed there, these are the fees that I'm specifically recommending we charge less than the full cost recovery fee, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have on those. So, from a fiscal standpoint, we did do an evaluation of fiscal year 1819, and that the report includes a comparison of what we collected overall versus what we roughly expended in that process. We're doing a good job, we're not at full cost recovery, the department isn't completely 100% paid for by the fees, but frankly, we're doing an amazing job compared to where we were three years ago. Probably, I'd roughly say about 75% of the Development Services Department's expense is covered in either these fees or in reimbursed grant funds when my staff is working on, you know, repaying Hatchby Boulevard or something like that. So doing a very good job of recovering those costs and limiting the expenses the taxpayer in both cases. So, with all that said, I'd be happy to talk about any of the details in the fee program. I think I gave you all, we gave you a distilled down listing of the fees. If you go to the next page, Ashley, we list in each one the proposed fee in green against the current fee in yellow, and then the plus or the minus is in the third column. In general, any large number that you see is because it's a new fee. So if you go down to BS76, that acronym is unwise, but anyway, we've never had a building decision appeal process, but we should, because our codes say that somebody that is unhappy with the building department can appeal to you all to play their case out. That's a sizable endeavor to get that all prepared for you all, so the fee is sizable, but we didn't have a fee before, so that's why you'll see that the number in the third column is a very large number. But most of them, as you'll see, are either up a little bit or down a little bit. In general, there was, anyway, the fees didn't change in a sizable way in any direction, with the exception of the new fees that were created. So with all that said, we can talk about any of the details you like, but I recommend you adopt the resolution to say, council, the City of Hatchby, adjusting, extending, and establishing fees for planning, engineering, and building services. So I hope that explains it, happy to answer any questions.
Are there, are there any comments from the public concerning this? If not, I can...
Entertain a motion.
Close the public hearing. All right, public hearing is now closed. Council comments?
No, I was reading this the other day, and it's like, every one of our, not everyone, but a lot of our costs have gone down, our fees, so that will encourage people to follow the rules, I think.
Yeah.
And do it correctly. It's not, not very often that you see the fees drop in our, in our today's society. It seems like everything's going up in our world. So I commend Jay and his group for doing this. We're not gonna be coming back here in a year to adjust this, are we? Are we gonna be okay with these new fees?
Yeah, my intent is a minimum of a three-year wait. I think this is a good timing sequence, but the reality is, it depends on, I don't think the zoning code's likely to change a lot, and a lot of what, what really prompted tonight is those dozen new fees, because I have, for instance, like, architecture review only. So we're getting applicants coming in, the only thing they were doing to their building was changing the architecture. Well, technically, that was a $5,000 fee, $5,371 fee, but staff's turning on that, because that was an AD and SPR, that's Architectural Design Cycle number eight, that's what the fee is. But, but that's the same fee I charged for alarm, you know, so we wanted to create a new category that said, look, if all you're doing is remodeling your building, you're not changing the parking, you're not changing the tenants, well, then that limits what we have to look at to, to take that to the planning commission and approve it. So we created a new category for $2,000 to go through that process. So that's a good example. So this, all these changes were really prompted by understanding zoning, continuing to understand the zoning code better, so, am I gonna promise or whatever, but I don't have any intention to do so. Like, I believe this gets us pretty close to hold in terms of being able to, whatever that request is, that's the thing, whatever walks in the front door, I gotta have, I gotta have a form for that, I gotta, you know, like, here's what you do, here's how much you pay me, and here are the five steps I take you through to give you a yes or a no, so, anyway, hopefully this gets us there, and we'll just be doing this, come here forward.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to, for the user fee update.
I'll make a motion that we accept number 14, the Development Service Fee, User Fees Update for 2019, and make a motion that we accept this.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
It's been seconded.
We are adopting a resolution, we're adopted.
Do I have to do a roll call?
No.
We just have to stay, all right.
Just have to stay, that you're talking.
All right, yeah, that we are adopting a resolution as, as per our, our motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 3-0 vote.
Thank you.
City Attorneys Report?
Madam Mayor, I will be gone during your second December meeting, the 16th. I've talked to Greg about this, I have an attorney who fills in for me with my other cities, and that's Mark Bateman. He used to be with GloboFiling, who does litigation for us. He's now with Young Wall Bridge. They have a major public agency department in their firm, and so I've talked to Greg that he will fill in for me if he wished, and he did, and so with his contract, Mark Bateman's contract on your agendas, and I approve.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience concerning this? Council? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the engagement letter for Mark Bateman.
I move that we approve the engagement letter for Mark Bateman.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 3-0 vote. City Managers Report?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, tonight's meeting is a short one, but we've accomplished a lot of very important public business, and I can thank the staff for working on these items diligently and thoroughly, and thank the staff for their support, and continue to make really good progress in the City of Hatchby, and just so proud of the people that I've worked with. A couple other things, item number eight, which I believe is the, sorry, it was item number nine, it's a non-consent, but I want to point out that the City of Hatchby has had a very successful partnership with Friends of Hatchby Depot, or FOTD. It's been 10 years since the depot burned and was rebuilt, so tonight, we re-upped for another 10 years, elites with FOTD, between the city and FOTD, and they continue to do a marvelous job. It is simply one of the many jewels in downtown, so I could thank the volunteers in the leadership group at Friends of Hatchby Depot. You know, their category is Hatchby Community Theater, TCT, Tourism Commission, the Heritage, they, I could go on and on with all of the volunteer organizations and nonprofit organizations in the city and this community, and wanted personally to thank all of them for all of the hours that they've put in. Also, Veterans Day was last week, and I know that we've had several council members attend. Mayor was there, Mr. Davis was there, I know that our Chief of Police was there, was volunteering at the, at the visitor's center, we had just a great, it was a beautiful day in Hatchby, honoring our vets, a lot of visitors, and it's a great place to live, work, and visit, so thank you for your time this evening.
Mr. Davis, do you have any council member comments?
I'd just like to comment on what Mr. Garrett said, I was at the Veterans Day ceremony. My birthday didn't serve, but my fathers and my grandfather fathers did, and just really proud of everybody in the city, all the employees, our members of our community that has served. Just very proud of everybody. It was a great event, I was there, our band was there, our choir was there, we just had a great turnout, I had a lot of people walk up and said it was a beautiful event. It was just a great event all around. I appreciate everybody that did their part, and I appreciate everybody that has served, that sent to our audience, and that, that worked for the city, and I appreciate your service to our community as well.
Oh, sure. In addition, we have the Honor Flight Breakfast over at the Calvert Church. It's the, I believe, fourth Saturday of the month, it starts at 9:00, and we always have a lovely turnout, you know, there's over 100 vets that come. It's a really exciting event, I was not able to attend the vets.
The veterans?
Yeah, the Saturday I was out of town, but anyway, I'm glad that it was successful. Also, downtown is starting to look beautiful, we have snowflakes all over the place, and then the Christmas tree will be decorated in front of our depot, and it always looks so beautiful, I don't know if you guys, I'm sure you notice, it's huge, but anyway, and that'll be coming up, and our tree lighting is on December 7th, so get ready for that, and parade, we have a parade as well.
And pray that it doesn't snow December 7th.
No, I think it would be cool.
Yeah, I know, we have that snow, we can get our dusty house.
Anyway, we have no closed session tonight, so we're going to stand adjourned, thank you.